Today on ubusutter.live, Government Watch. At 6:00, the Marysville City Council and the Uba City Council regular meetings. After that, the Marysville Unified School Trustees delayed stream after the Marysville City Council ends, and the Uba City Unified School Trustees delayed stream after Uba City Council ends. Today on ubusutter.live's Government Watch, presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Government Watch. That's happening today, right here on ubusutter.live. ubusutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Let's move to order, and we all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to my little religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any agenda reorganization? We're checking to report, our students are missing. Staff recognition.
Staff recognition. So we are excited to continue our tradition of recognizing excellence in our staff and what they bring to the culture of YCUSD. We have two employees that we are scheduled to appreciate today. One did have to go home unexpectedly the other day today because she wants them, and so we will honor her when she returns from that time. And we also have Principal Riverbend, Mr. Love to present.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Cabinet. It's wonderful to be here tonight to celebrate an outstanding staff member at Riverbend Elementary School. And tonight, it's my great honor to present Mr. Clarence Kraft. And Clarence, can you come up to me? Clarence. Well, Clarence, you can see he's pretty tall. I'm not too sure, I'm not really tall, my tooth is short or anything, but he's a tall guy and teaches kindergarten. And he's just fun to watch in the classroom, you know, the kindergarten's about this big. And we have another tall kindergarten teacher, too. So Riverbend's kind of unique with that. We got two gentlemen teachers who are very tall. But in the classroom, Mr. Kraft, he is positive and dynamic and fun to watch. He gets down on those little chairs with the kids, does it, and Ben's very flexible. And he's got magic bags, he pulls prizes and toys out of and makes learning fun, and the kids light up and follow his lead. And I just want to, I want to shout that out first because what happens in the classrooms with the kids is the most important thing. And they do learn. And when he has students who are struggling to learn, he cares with so much of his heart. He comes and talks to me, he reaches out to his parents. He's looking for solutions to get caught up and give them extra support when they, when they need it. So he's a really caring teacher. So he's a dynamic and really caring teacher. He's also a staff member who looks out for the whole school. He's always thinking of Riverbend and the great things about it. He likes to share our strengths, and he also looks for areas where we can improve and grow, and he shares ideas with me and his colleagues. And he always does so in a really positive and constructive manner that doesn't divide people, it's just, it's open-minded and he presents information, and it's for the good of all. And I like the way he goes about looking for solutions, very constructive like that. He's been helpful to me, and I've known him from when I worked in the district office in HR, and now I get the honor of working with him at the, at the school. So I've known him a few months as a principal and teacher relationship. And in that time, I've seen him look beyond the classroom. He's a veteran teacher here, but we're about the same age, about the same number of years. And he's had more than one assignment, right? You've taught other subjects, too. Yeah. But he's now plays a role of helping some of our new teachers. And I asked some of them to, to share things, and one of them really stood out. And so this is from one of your, your colleagues. He said, "I'd like to say that Mr. Kraft has made the transition to teaching kindergarten easy and has helped me every step of the way. Every teacher should strive to be like him, and the love he receives from students shows his impact as an educator and role, role model." So, you know, that just pretty much sums it up. The kids just really appreciate you, you work well with the parents, they appreciate him, they know that he cares about their children. You look beyond yourself, you help out your colleagues, you help me, you help your school. And he's just a great asset to our school district. And I'm so honored to present you tonight for the school board and the cabinet, and that's well deserved, so congratulations.
Guys, together. Can I get sure the two of you together?
We're together.
Oh, you know what, though? Can we go this direction? Thank you. There's a really bad glare on the light.
I understand, it's great, so I know it's a little short.
Okay, come on, guys. One, two, three, smile. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Kraft, can I ask you a question? Since we have time. What do you find is the inspiration behind your excellence?
Inspiration? I'm on my job. And that's pretty much it. I mean, that's, I do it for them. It's rewarding. You watch a kindergartner come in that writes their name with a slanted S, and at the end, they can not only write their name perfect, but they're reading books to you. And that's just, that's what I get paid to it for.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Laura, I think I'll go over to the children.
Oh, sure. Do you want, you need to take it with your phone? There's probably about four there, so one of them's.
All right, moving on to reports and information, we have Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. We have John McLevy from Habitat for Humanity. I'm going to share a project that they are involved in and request to the board.
Thank you, Superintendent. So good evening, good to be in front of you guys again. We're on the same basic topic. Tonight, we're nearing at this point, the point we're going to do groundbreaking at the Mary McVillage Project. So to do groundbreaking, this is actually now the last step to have you guys want to consider an important spot. There has to be a sign-off from the school district for school fees before the permits can be issued, before they can do groundbreaking. So if there would be an action to be able to consider, we'd have to try to figure out how to do that before the ninth is possible, and I realize this is an information item. But that is something we have to, we have to get in place. And I also wanted to just make a special note, this is a HCD Housing and Community Development Department for the State grant for Home Key, and they have issued the grant funds. But this project is Habitat for Humanity partnered with the City of Uba City, and the City of Uba City has put in restrictions on releasing funds for contract or for any piece of that money without, without their, without a process of going through approvals for each step of the way, which essentially means that money is, like, if we were to pay school fees upfront, we wouldn't, we don't have access to the money until we get to the start of the project. And it's, it is currently listed in our first round of funding release and identified. So it's sort of this cart and horse challenge we're facing. So another consideration might be to allow for the funding if you were to not take any action and not do anything regarding school fees, just to get through that first start so we can, you know, get an approval for the permitting process, and then the money can come as soon as that's released for, within, like, given, you know, less than a month. But I wanted to mention, too, to understand Mary McVillage, there is a preference for Uba City residents. We currently have about 1,200 people in our waiting list for the 217 apartments that will be fully built in the end. Our first phase that we're starting with now are just the first 79 units, and they're two-bedroom units, so they are family-focused units compared to the studios that would be veteran-focused or senior-focused. And we know that we've already met a number of people because school district staff in this school district have come to the restore. I wouldn't say often, but they have come, they know they can come. And several different people, I thought it was one point of contact they learned today, but actually it's a number, a number of different people. They've come and they've gotten support for families that have homeless children that are going to school in the district today. And so they've needed mattresses, or they've needed personal hygiene stuff. Sometimes it's just Amazon treats and goodies, things to help someone cheer up in the day, school supplies. It's a number of things. I think two weeks ago, they got a prom dress for somebody, for one of the dances on this side over here. So we know we're in a relationship, we know these are not new people, these are existing students and they're existing campuses. We're just giving them a safe place to live and, you know, try to trim out and cut out the cup surfing or, you know, harsh living conditions that we know that are being dealt with in the housing crisis that we're in. And I know, Superintendent, you read this letter at the last meeting. I do have it. If you want me to read it again, I think you guys got it, and I know that you're very smart. It essentially is just trying to express that City of Uba City has taken the role of suspending permit fees. So the City Council of Uba City has put aside 1.6 million. The Gilzeiser SLU Board has a drainage issue. They took a pathway of saying, you know, we don't have to have it all upfront, just make payments, you know? We can stretch this out and put it across the process, you know? And those things all help out. Your fees at the first end are going to come at the same time that PG&E and the city both want everything to be moved underground. And the eight acres that we're on is right across the street from another seven and a half acres that's for developable land. We have to do the underground for them as well. And so the front-end costs are massive compared to the whole cost that'll level out in the next phase. And it'll absorb nicely when we start building units that are much less expensive to build, and we've already got the main infrastructure in. But to do this first phase, the infrastructure has to be for all of it. And so it's really impactful at this time. It really goes after the feasibility, if you will. We have lined up a $5 million line of credit, but it would be towards the end. And I would also just, something unique that has come to us, the state has said that they contacted us and said, "Have you identified your second round of funding for second phase?" And at this stage, we hadn't. So they suggested that they have a number of unspent dollars and unclaimed dollars for the Home Key and Home Key Plus programs. So they have encouraged us to go ahead and apply for the second round now, which is another 37 million. They're pretty confident because we are ready to go to construction and because it's already in motion. We've gone through a tremendous amount of work with the City of Uba City and Hillburners and trying to keep all of our funds and efforts as local as possible, that we're a great candidate. So the city will soon hear a resolution for that second phase. So it'll make them, it'll just, all of the troubles kind of walk away at that point. So it really kind of helps because it all fits into the right size. We're building the most expensive apartments, having the most expensive infrastructure, everything's upfront. And so we're just trying to appeal to this board to, you know, as community leaders to consider, this is something that we're doing for our existing and our own people just to bring them relief that directly benefits them. For those that struggle with the rent, Habitat will subsidize that. And so if we can't find a way to make it work through a housing voucher or through some other means, we'll, we've made that commitment. We will always only charge, you know, 30% of the mean average of the area for people living at 50% of the mean average. So they'll always have to swallow the income into this program. Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is the breakout of your funding, public versus private ratio?
Right now, it's primarily public. It's, we've got 26 million from the state. We've got 5 million that Habitat is using our properties and our assets to hold its collateral for that. So it's, it's the state and Habitat. Habitat, 5 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, at this point, we've invested about 4 million on the project for property acquisition and for all architectural drawings, all the things it takes to get to this moment, so yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Twin Rivers Charter School, their data report.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Obi Laff and Chrissy Jolly.
And Raj Deel.
And Raj Deel from Twin Rivers Charter, who are going to give us their annual update. City Council.
Councilwoman. Hi, everyone, I'm Obi Laff, I serve as co-director-principal.
I'm Chrissy Jolly, I serve as co-director-principal.
I'm Raj Deel, I serve as student services coordinator.
And every year, we come and present a data update, let you know how things are going. And I just want to say thank you for having us and for your partnership and support. Of course, our charter is authorized through Uba City Unified, and we just really value that partnership, and thank you so much. We're going to start with our student vision, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues for more. This is our entire student vision, and it's framed as a student vision because it describes what success looks like for students. So to contrast from an organizational vision of what maybe our organization or school would look like and shaped, this is, this diagram represents our hope or intention for all of our students. And notice that it's organized into two halves, okay? On one side, on the left side is academic excellence. And on the right side, responsible citizenship. And when you put those two pieces together, that describes success. So I'm known at school to ask kids, "Show me, show me academic excellence, show me responsible citizenship," put it together, have them say success, so that this, we're trying to empower students to understand what we're aiming for, which is one of our tiger stripes there, that students know and understand what it is that they're trying to learn, that students are fostered with a growth mindset. So we have standards-based grading. Standards-based grading is rubric scored, and so wherever students are is okay on the rubric, and we want them to know what the expectations for mastery look like, and then help guide them to get there. And the academic skills are defined in our curriculum and through our PLC process. So that left side is your academic excellence side, but what we have found is that the responsible citizenship side is really interrelated and integrated. And I don't want to steal your thunder, because we have more on that. Yeah. But these are the characteristics that we've identified, being responsible, being respectful, and building and acting as a community. So that does actually guide some of our decision-making, et cetera, in our school processes, as we're shaping programs. How can we empower students to, to own this process so that when they leave as eighth graders, that they can then go and then learn for life, which is our school motto?
Yeah, so what we have found is through, we found that we have each other's strengths, and then we have, and we're a great team because of that, is through our academic habits. So in our academics, we look at our standards, we unpack those standards, we look at learning targets, we respond to intervention quickly, and we have all those academic supports in place. But what we've found is that if students don't have the academic habits or the dispositions or behaviors that they need to excel in academics, then really it's, you have to have both to empower them in academics, because otherwise, they're working really hard, but they don't have the skills that they need to, to move right. So our teachers kind of got together and they decided, what would be the habits we would want to see from every single student that would mean that they're being successful in the classroom? Or where there's some deficits, where we need to see students grow so they can be successful academically? And they came up with our academic habits. And we've broken down each one of these by pod levels, so we have TK through two academic habit rubrics where they say, "I can," and they go through each academic habit, and the students can say exactly what it is that it looks like in the classroom. So imagine you're a seven-year-old, and the teacher is getting ready to transition, and she says, "I really want to see you completing independent practice. That's what I want to see when you go back to your desks." Now those students are empowered and in charge to know, I'm not going to be asking for help, I've been given the tools, I need to go back and complete this by myself, that is what my teacher is expecting. So we're teaching it, we're saying exactly what we expect, and then we're giving them feedback on how well they're doing that. What we have found is that 80% of students with 100% consistent academic habits make the honor roll. So in that was rubric that I was talking about, you can either get consistent or not consistent in academic habits. Those are the two feedback categories that you can get as a student. And what we've found is when students have all consistent in their academic habits, 80% of them will make the honor roll. 20% of students missing two or more make the honor roll. High correlation between those academic habits and their ability to attain and to be proficient in academics. With our teachers and our, our whole staff are classified as very empowered and part of our whole process. Our students set goals, they do this sometimes in the morning before school with a parent educator, they do it with teachers in the classroom, they do it after school with our after-school care program, they're making goals all throughout their day. Students earn recognition for that success, they receive support if needed through our tier system, and then our habits are reflected in our grading system. So parents are getting the feedback as well as to how their students are doing.
Any questions?
And those habits are definitely reflected in our dashboard, so what you're looking at is the California Dashboard for Twin Rivers. And I'll get a little bit more into the tiles as we move on, but just overall, we are performing on the blue strand in all areas of academics, including science, and I think that's new just for this school year, correct? And another slide tile I want to bring your attention to is the teacher assignments. On that one, we're at 94.2% of our teachers with cleared credentials, and then we also had intern support last school year. And then moving on to our demographics, enrollment, 519 students. A little over 40% of those students are socioeconomically disadvantaged. 3.9% of those students are English learners, and then an additional 5.8% were reclassified last school year, and we didn't have any foster-use students last school year. Now diving a little bit more into the academic piece, we really do like to look at distance from standard, that, I mean, you can see the colors, but if you get into the distance of standard, you can really see and evaluate your programs to analyze whether or not your students are moving year over year. So in ELA, we went up 8.9 points from the year before. Our students are performing 55 points above standard, and then in mathematics, 53 points above standard, but again, that growth of that increase of 12.8 points from the previous school year. And just to bring your attention to our student subgroups, all of the identified subgroups performed at that blue level in math, and then in ELA, we had two subgroups that were in the green, and those were our English learners and our Hispanic population. And then speaking of English learners, 87.5% of them are making progress, and I do have some additional data for that. For our English learners, 90, they were, they performed above standard at 19 points, and then in math at 27 points, and our reclassified population also had similar results as well. And then our final slide is chronic absenteeism, which we maintain, and our suspension rate increased by a tiny bit at 1.1%.
Questions?
For everybody? Is this the end?
This is the end.
Sure.
Did you want more?
Always. We live for this, right, guys?
Data.
I know.
Oh, don't get these two started on data, you'll be here all night.
All right, lock in chat. Okay, so I have a question. So I have a couple of questions. The data on academic habits, so the 80% of students with 100% consistent academic habits make the honor roll. So, and I see your six academic habits, right? But I was just curious as to how that's measured.
Could I address that?
Please.
So at the end of a trimester, we publish report cards, and then the students have academic achievement marks, English, math, history, social science, and science, and physical education. So this is grade six to eight. Then in addition, the academic habits are all on the report card, and they're marked either consistent or not consistent. And so we run reports and study those and correlate those, and then sort them, and based on the academic achievement marks and then the academic habit marks, we see a really strong correlation. These students are above 3.5 GPA, they're These students are above three point five GPA, they're averaging above proficient closer to the mastery side. And you just look down this, these row after row after row, and you see consistent academic habits.
And one thing that we've, we see with our students who maybe make the honor roll but have two or more missing habits, they're at proficient, not necessarily at mastery. So it's what's keeping them from being at that like highest level.
Extra. Okay, yeah, um, and then the habits reflected in the grading system, is that what you're talking about, like?
So they're completely separate, so like where you have traditional system, where you have like participation and you have like test scores, they're completely siloed, so you, in this, this side of academics is strictly academic standards. So can you, what does your test scores look like, what is your, what is social skill? Like our social studies will say, social science skills, like can you annotate a text? Can you, um, take a primary source and, um, you know, dissect it? And then these, this side is just the habits. What do I see on the day-to-day from that student, and how are they performing?
But they're still grading, right? That's still part, this, the academic habits are still part of the
Report card.
The report card, and thus the grading rubric, right?
Consistent or not consistent, yeah.
Okay, so like, almost like a pass fail?
Yep.
And so how does that impact the, the grade?
So the grade, the
Okay, so that's what you mean by separate, it's on the report card, but it doesn't go into the GPA?
No.
However, um, it comes together with our honor roll, with our honor roll, and I didn't want to get into, we, too much, but, uh, to show up, comes together.
Your questions, your questions.
I'm welcome.
We have an honor roll which asks our students to be at least proficient, average of proficient in all their academic classes. We have a golden honor roll, okay, that asks for them to be three point five closer to mastery. And to qualify for golden honor roll, we require one hundred percent consistent academic habits. So the motivation to get that golden honor roll is, is we need to see these habits demonstrated consistently.
We also have an academic habit honor roll, so if you are struggling academically, maybe there's some deficits or there's some learning disabilities, but you show up every single day and you try hard, and you're consistent in your academic habits to the best of your ability, you're gonna get honor roll for that.
So, so what about the twenty percent who are consistent, but they're not on the honor roll?
So the twenty percent that, did you say that are consistent?
Yeah, I just did a little quick math.
Yeah.
So the eighty percent of students with a hundred percent consistent academic, they make that like, so
Yeah, that interesting.
Yeah, so that, wouldn't that be fun to look at?
It is so interesting. It's a book, right, yeah, because, uh, I'd say
There's twenty percent that are consistent, but they're not on that honor roll.
Right, so the question that, the questions that we use to guide our response to support students are the four critical PLC questions. What do we expect students to learn? Well, that's clear, how do we know if they've learned it? Well, we have it on the report cards. Then, how do we respond if they have not yet learned? So then the question we ask, is it a will issue, is it a skill issue? And so if we see that the student has a hundred percent consistent academic habits, I feel pretty, pretty confident that it's not a will issue.
Right.
And given their best, so then we can hone in and say, this is a skill issue. So these students can be supported through our tier-two processes. We have a flexible period that we call win, it stands for whatever I need.
I get you.
Yeah, those, those students are getting, just be supported through their academic skills. Now, if they're not consistent, and this is the current work that is in progress, is how do we respond to build and bolster those academic habits?
Mm-hmm.
So if you go back one more slide, you want to really nerd out with us? Okay, so we are looking at how, what, which, which tier-two and tier-three interventions do we consistently use that don't, it's not a bang for our buck, like it's not sinking in. We're at the level now where we're looking at what executive functioning processes and skills do we need to integrate in the lower grades so they're going into middle school with those? So staying focused and uses time wisely effectively is our, it's the area of the most rough for our school.
Well, quite frankly, for me too.
He's folks, guys, yeah. So now we're looking at, okay, what executive functioning skills go in that, how can we proactively teach that?
Go share that with your students.
It could happen all night.
Go share that with your students.
I, yes, I would not make the, I would not be consistent, I would like, I would like to go down.
Would you advocate for themselves, so we'd celebrate that, right?
Your working team, and those, that twenty percent that isn't a hundred percent of the academic habits but are making the honor roll, typically they're missing one academic habit, and they have four strong habits.
Okay, I could be in that group.
Yeah, you can be in that group.
Possibly. I was just excited by that because, um, I was just curious, how long has this been going on?
Since we started standards-based grading.
Maybe three, four years.
Four years, yeah.
Four years.
Yeah.
And that really came out of like, if we're, if we're moving to standards-based grading, well, how do we hold students accountable to complete their work in the classroom, to participate, complete their homework, because that's not reflected in the standards-based report card.
But that's the
Right.
So that's where, that's kind of the origin, more or less, of the academic habits.
Well, it's, it's, it's almost rewarding, um, work ethic.
Right.
Right?
And, yeah.
And all in all, you may forget the capital of Kazakhstan, but the work ethic being consistent. I know you're all thinking about it right now, okay, I just, I don't remember it, but, um. I like that.
You're curious.
My other question, I'm sorry, I'm, I'll, I mean, I know they all have questions too.
Hold them back, hold them back.
I know, I know, I know. So I'm curious as to your demographic, uh, population, like, um, because our, obviously, we're, um, I mean, we're friends, we're all in U of City, we're family, okay? But our English learner, what is our English learner? You knew I was gonna ask this, I mean.
Above twenty percent.
What is what?
Twenty-seven percent.
Yeah, ours is above twenty percent.
And I wish I had the numbers, but our main goal is to reclassify our students as early as possible.
Well, I think that's ours as well.
Well, three point nine, and then what did I say, with the reclassified was like five point eight percent.
I think it was seventeen, have we classified nine, seven or nine last year?
Yeah.
Four.
I mean, it's, it's like a high priority.
Oh, yeah.
Because what we've noticed is that when students stay in ELD and they're being polled for designated minutes, they're typically missing a tier-two or a tier-three intervention time because it's competing time.
Right.
So then our number one goal is to get the most amount of resources in, frankly, kindergarten, now I'm actually moving into TK.
For sure.
So that when they get to kindergarten, our number one goal is for them to designate, but then if they don't, continue to up those resources until they do.
I'm tracking with you.
I feel like we have more English learners that are not necessarily designated as English learners.
And what?
On their arms.
Because?
Just how, that's how they're coming in.
They're coming in as
You know how parents mark on that intake form, language is spoken at home.
Mm-hmm. Uh-huh.
They're coming in English all the way down.
I'll, I'll show you one of those forms, so you'll understand.
Language, right.
A lot of parents don't want them to be designated as English learners, so they
Either they've had an experience that they're coming in with, or pre-designated disposition that they think how it is, and so then they just say, no.
Okay.
When really, really, no.
Over the years, our English learner reclassification has been pretty successful. And so that, that ban of English learners has gone down.
I was just curious as to, you know, we're in the same, I mean, I'm sure you're getting students from area, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
I, I know, I live right by you guys, I'm sure.
And
But I'm just curious as to why, um, why it's so few, that's all I was asking.
Right.
You might not know why, because it's
Yeah.
I would point to the reclassification process over the years.
There's the most Yeah.
But also, uh, supporting English learners is through the designated English language development, okay? And it's also through the integrated, which we all own that process. And so I would just argue, and I'd have to really dig in to, to back this up. But our, our process of, um, of supporting all students through that standards-based grading, through empowering to know what they need to learn and getting them there. And so the responsibility to reclassify, uh, an English learner is carried just as strongly by a fourth-grade classroom teacher, for example, as it is through the designated English language development. It's a shared effort, and so we have to meet certain thresholds to reclassify your students. They have to earn a four on their LPAC assessment, they have to, there's no, I'm practicing that.
And Mm-hmm.
They have to demonstrate that they're proficient alongside their grade-level peers.
Yeah.
And that happens through that ongoing process. Uh, so it's a concerted effort, and I think one of the strengths, um, there's some evidence in the dashboard, uh, is, for example, in mathematics, that all of our subgroups, if you look down to the bottom of the middle table,
Right.
all of our subgroups are making growth, which, which tells us that our process orientation is being effective for all students.
And those students that are English learners, we really try our best, whatever we can do, to make sure that they don't miss that quality tier-one, and they also get the quality tier-two in addition to the ELD support. So they're not getting something in lieu of, like they're getting ELD, so they're not getting X intervention or whatever, yeah.
Sure. Okay.
And they're trying to keep the designated on grade level, because they ultimately still have to get the right test score, right?
Sure.
On LPAC and on our MAP score or whatever our goal, yeah.
MAP score, star.
Um, and then, I think this is my last question. If you know what you're, uh, what's your teacher-to-student ratio or your average class size?
Um, average whole school, I, we have twenty-four to one, TK to two, twenty-six
Grade three, and then twenty-eight, uh, four-three.
Twenty-eight, four-three.
Okay. That's it, alright, now, go ahead, you guys.
You have a question?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate all the work you're doing.
Yeah, you all so much, gentlemen. Yeah.
Are there any comments on the public agenda file?
There are none.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda, any questions concerning, nope, sorry.
I moved, do we approve the consent agendas?
Second.
On a motion by member Priti, and a second by member Ciara Silla, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, running on, voting carries?
Thank you, and with that action, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Scott Bentley to introduce the newest member of his team.
Absolutely, it is, it is with great pleasure that I introduce Tricia Calier to the Director of Accounting position. She has been a long-term employee of the district, um, can I say the year?
She was a baby when she started.
Twenty years with the district, and a, a true asset to me and the team.
Oh, my God.
And this is, uh, you know, just, uh, wonderful for me that she accepted, uh, and congratulations.
Yay.
Uh, just a few questions.
Do I have to come up with a podium?
Totally kidding.
Congratulations.
Okay. And, uh, thank you, moving on to next items.
Bye, Tricia.
She sounds so beautiful, like I'm out of here.
Alright, yeah.
Action item, A, expulsion, suspended contract, readmissions.
I make a motion that we move as discussed in closed session.
Second. All taken. On a motion by member Ciara Silla, and a second by member Lam, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was abstained, so I won't, uh, I won't vote.
Abstain.
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 One abstain, um, motion carries? B, scheduling a December organizational meeting.
Thank you, so it is going to be that time of the year, and so, uh, the board will need to hold their annual, uh, their organizational meeting. And the proposed date is December sixteenth, and so, um, we need the board to approve that date, and we will send up your organizational meeting.
Right. Question?
I make them, no.
Good?
Motion.
Second.
Too slow.
On a motion by member Lam, second by member Ciara Silla, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, running on, motion carries? C, second revised reading for proposed provisions.
Oh, sorry, thanks, me. Um, I'm bringing forth the next set of board policies, this is the second reading, um, and would recommend, um, approval of the proposed, uh, board policies and administrative regulations.
So we do vote on this?
Second meeting.
Just let me have it written.
Yep, you got it right.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go for it.
But I'm gonna let other people go this time, so anybody else who has questions, vote.
I feel bad.
Don't feel bad.
Okay, good, alright, so, um, I have a question on more policy fifty-one, forty-eight point three, which was updated to reflect the new law SB one-six-three in twenty-twenty-four, which authorizes until July first, twenty-twenty-seven, a district operating a California state preschool program to enroll interested two-year-old children. Additionally, policy updated to clarify that the evidence of the California residency may be established by providing evidence of a California street or post office address. In addition, policy updated to add that a district is prohibited from expelling or unenrolling a child or persuade or encourage a child's parent during to voluntarily or unenroll them from the program based on child behavior unless expulsion, yada, yada, yada. Actually, but my question was more informative. So in our current, um, uh, preschool program, are we enrolling two-year-olds?
So because of the TK program that has now encompassed our four-year-olds, Fawn is, um, had, we have had a toddler program that is two-year-olds, but I don't believe we're currently operating one, but we, this allows her to be able to operate a two-year program. But we had one, and then we, we closed it, and then, but this gives the option to open, operate a two-year-old program.
So why did we close it previously?
It was a blended program that had both special education and general education students in there, and I think that the staffing of it became problematic, and, and therefore, we moved those preschoolers into a preschool program. And then Fawn needed to just, there were some logistical issues, and so she elected to close the program right now. But she can open, reopen it if she'd like to.
The logistical issues were?
Well, I think that was, there were some staffing issues, there was a square footage of the, the room itself, so there was a whole number of issues that were coming up through licensing.
But now that she's lost the four-year-olds to TK, right? So now there's an opening, and so we're accepting two-year-olds.
She is not currently, but she has
But she wants to.
She, she, yes, she may want to reopen a two-year-old program, uh, but there is just a whole host of, as you can imagine, two-year-olds. But, um, we, she can still keep four-year-olds in the preschool program if parents elect to go to preschool versus TK. So she does have some four-year-olds who aren't ready to go on to TK.
Right, so she would then be advocating for, because if we accept this, then it says, like, there's no further permission needed, she can accept two-year-olds.
She
So, yeah.
Correct, if she goes through the whole licensing program to be able to accept two-year-olds.
Right, it's not just an automatic, she has to go through those steps.
So we're basically just giving her permission to do something.
Right, um, okay, well, yeah, um, uh, oof, I'm not for that. I'm not for two-year-olds in a preschool program, so there's four, three, and two, so I would like to take that one separately.
Please, okay. So it's BP five-one-four-eight?
Um.
Yes.
May, may I ask the concern about two-year-olds in a preschool program?
Um, because two-year-old isn't, isn't preschool, but that's three and four. Two-year-old is a toddler, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, um, that's a daycare, this isn't
So, yeah, so recognize that this is a, it actually is a childcare program versus a preschool program.
A daycare program, right, so it's not education, we're education.
Yes. Okay.
And, um, and, uh, I think, so also, I, I understand, but again, this isn't a, um, this, this, unless I'm told otherwise, this feels like, well, we've lost the TK, and we have to make up. Because that was one of the things that was presented, was we've, we've lost a lot of students to TK, and so we've lost a lot of funding. But studies after studies after studies, I understand, everybody has a different ability, they have different situations. But I'm just saying, best case educationally for children is that those first years are spent learning through play at home with a mom or dad or family that love them. That's, that's best case, and studies show that it works out so much better academically, behaviorally, if children, if they can, like I said, the caveat is, obviously, there's a lot of different people in different situations, and they don't all have it. But if we want what's best for the children educationally, because that's our lane, then, um, all the studies show, those early years should be spent at home playing and learning with family that love them. So I don't think educationally, it's in the child's best interest if they are stuck in a daycare program. Um, and, um, uh, and so I can't, and, and so education is the lane I'm in, and that's the line I'm gonna stay in here, so.
And I, I want to explain that, uh, U of City Unified is a district that is unique, and that it does offer a childcare program. It's not obligated, districts are not obligated to offer these programs.
Right.
I don't know when this started, but for me, uh, the programs have been in operation. So I understand what you're saying in terms of education, but because U of City Unified has elected to offer childcare programs, we're obligated also to bring board policies forward, so that's why I'm bringing this forward, but I understand the separation of, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think just, um
Well, I had concerns about the two-year-olds.
Well, I had concerns about the two-year-olds too, or in fact, I spoke to you about it. I, I had concerns about the two-year-olds. And I guess that it's the wording, it's the preschool wording that, that bothers me too. It's, it's, if it's childcare, it's childcare and, um, and, and Kirsten, I, I will tell you that if you've got parents that are teachers in the district, this is a, this is a valuable uh, thing to have. Yes, I agree with you. It's, it would be much better if those teachers weren't teaching and they were staying home with their babies. But sometimes it's just not possible in the secondary.
As I said, look, totally. Everybody's different. I get it. Their own decisions.
But. But, uh, to offer a, uh, to offer a daycare program for two-year-olds for parents who are teaching, I think is, it's a valuable asset to have in the district.
But it's not just for parents that are teaching. This is just for anybody who wants it for free daycare. It's not free. Love the record show. It's nothing is free.
Incom- in. Incomeligible.
We are all paying for it. Yes.
So I just wanted to explain the separation of education and why, why this exists in, in UBC Unified. So it is a childcare program, um, and licensing is different. And so I just wanted to clarify that, but we can take that item separately.
I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm still.
So we're calling a vote for.
All of the policies, all the exceptions of five-one, BP five-one four and AR five-one four eight.
All the policies. Okay. So, all right, can I get a motion to approve all the policies with the exception of BP five-one four eight and AR five-one four eight?
Some of.
Second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Motion carries? Sorry. On a motion by member Pretty and a second by member Lamb. Okay, then we'll call for BP five-one four eight and AR five-one four eight. Can I get a motion?
Some of.
Second.
On a motion by member Pretty, second by member Lamb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nine.
Okay, we have five ayes, two nays.
One. I was the only nay.
One, one nay, one nay. Motion carries?
Thank you.
D, uh, replacement of YCTA laptops.
Is there a normal, uh, replace a cycle? We replace computers, um, on average every five years. And so we're asking approval to, uh, uh, to replace two hundred Lenovo laptops.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go for it.
These are for whom?
These are for teachers.
Go ahead.
Done it. Anything else?
Sorry.
Nope, can I get a motion?
I move the lead group.
Second.
On a motion by member Pretty, second by member Fonsla, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? F, executive assistant to superintendent Doc Strish.
Nope, student attendant.
Good, student attendants.
My bad. E, okay, attendance calendars.
We're bringing forth the, uh, recommendation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven student attendance calendars. We have been in consultation with both, uh, bargaining units, C, CSEA and YCTA. And we bring forth the, uh, two attendance calendars for approval.
Can I ask how the, um, so we do ask the bargaining units, but how do the members have their say in this? Like.
The teacher?
Yes.
Um, we serve, they have bargaining units, they survey it to all the teachers. And then they bring back their feedback to the, we have a calendar committee with, uh, YCTA, CSEA administrators. And then we kind of talk through the recommendations.
Do we have parents on this as well?
On this one, we did, but we did send out a parent survey. We got around seven hundred responses.
Seven hundred out of every?
Yes, I'm trying right now. The parent survey or calendar gets the most feedback. I think we do.
That's pretty good. I have a. I have a, a question. Um, is this our second or third year going to two weeks at Christmas?
I, since I, this is a fourth, since I've been here, this is the fourth year. Since I've been here.
Have we done any, um.
We're going back and forth along those.
I know, but have we done any calculations on how many kids are out for the three weeks at Christmas, but just take the three?
Well, what's interesting, it was just reported to me, is we actually have families leaving now.
I know.
Why?
For Christmas.
They just, yeah, so they're leaving now. They're being advised they could be dropped from their schools, but they're still likely to leave. So it's interesting because, you know, you give them, you know, we give, do a three week, then they take four weeks.
They take four weeks. Yeah.
It's two weeks it becomes. And I've never seen them leaving this early with a two-week break, um, to be leaving in November.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't seen that before. And so a, a few of the principals were talking to me about and I saw the list. And, um, we have a significant number leaving now and then those that'll leave in December.
And we drop them. Are we still dropping like, cause I haven't been in the school for a while, but so we're dropping them and then they have to re-enroll when they come back.
Are they losing credit?
Yeah.
If they're high school, they will be losing credit.
I have a question about this and it's not necessarily for next year's calendar, it was for this year's calendar. Do we have any statistics? I mean, we had Veterans Day, uh, it was on a Tuesday. Um, we have, I would guess there was a huge number of absences on Monday.
I don't think there were. I can check on that. We did, we did talk about that actually and, you know, in retrospect, I think we should have done it. Like my daughter's school district did it Monday and Tuesday. So it was like a four-day.
Yes.
Or, or move the.
Yeah, I looked at this one, but it's Wednesday next week.
Move the PD day to that Monday. You know what I'm saying? So that there's a, is a student non-attendance, maybe?
By next year, it'll be Wednesday.
Next year, Wednesday. So it's not like a middle.
Next year, it'll, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I looked at this a year ago.
It's like a big week.
Yeah, it's in the middle of the week, but, but yeah, and then my other question, and this is coming solely from somebody who has more experience with high school. But it looks like there's a PD day scheduled for, um, October.
Twenty-third.
Whatever day that is. Twenty-third. Why not the thirtieth?
It's twenty-third. And we decided that that's the day would be the most.
Cause this year we did it on the thirty-first, right? You had a PD day on the thirty-first, right?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't on Halloween, but Halloween was on Friday.
Maybe it was, maybe it was Sutter County, then some of it was on Friday.
Okay.
Just, just wondering.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I love that, um, that the teachers get a break in February.
It's awesome.
But I would like to advocate for a break in October.
You wouldn't.
Because.
Yeah, advocate for that.
Because of, of, I'm telling you, for new teachers, that, especially since we start so early in August, to have a break in, in October would be so beneficial to, especially to new teachers.
So we have, um, so one of the things in schools that you were to see polarization on every year is district calendars. Is everyone has a specific need they want. And so, for example, we're pretty evenly split with our, um, teachers on, actually no, it's more, they're more in favor of keeping the two-week vacation versus the three-week in December. Uh, we're pretty much fifty-fifty with the parents on the Christmas break, on the holiday break, during winter break. And the same thing is October. And so I asked the parents, February, February is pretty consistent through our teachers, through CSEA and through parents. Everyone likes the February break. That was a pretty consistent.
I think the weather tends to be a little better in February.
October was, once again, it was like, it was like, there was no majority on that one.
But I get you.
But the last three years, we actually have tried to align with YCAA and Albert Powell, cause they have that September break. It's like, I think the last week of September. Um, we just haven't gone to that yet. Cause once you do that, then you have to take away something else.
Okay.
Or students flop them, I think, maybe flop the February, October.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or. Or even.
I asked that and people, the parents were in favor of it.
Or go longer. I mean, I, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, and that's the thing.
Yeah.
Completely interesting really, cause I asked about in October, Tino and I were talking about that. And it's again, that trade-off, if you take an October break, then you've got to either, you start earlier, you end earlier. And I think that some of those are just the things we've not been able to.
And the, um, parents and the teachers, actually, everyone pretty much agrees that our start time is actually pretty consistent with what everybody wants. Um, teachers don't wanna start earlier, um, but they don't wanna start too late. It's pretty consistent, like middle, mid-August is really where we're getting feedback on from teachers and from parents.
So you didn't have anybody who said, take out the February break, let's have a longer summer break?
You might have some one-offs on that.
I would totally do that wrong.
But it wasn't.
Wouldn't it be awesome to be done before Memorial Day?
Yes.
Oh.
You know, Labor Day to Memorial Day.
I just remember as a, when I was a new teacher, that, that time from when I started school
Yeah, but it's.
and then, um, you know, to do report cards before the Thanksgiving break, it was, that was a long time.
I think we're getting closer with the October break. I think we're getting more momentum.
It will be just very good.
And direction.
And I, and I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say get rid of the February break. I'd say go a week longer in June. It, June is usually cool.
Cool. Yeah.
Yes. But then it's like, if you have kids that, or parents that have, you know, a kid graduating from high school and graduating from college, then it falls in like the same week? So. Um, right? Cause like my graduation was like a week right after high school graduation. So it's like.
Yeah.
Well, but the high school wouldn't be graduating until.
But if it were to move it by a week, it would be. So then if it's like, you have kids that are like further away or like out of the States, like, then it's like an issue of parents of just having to choose.
But maybe you're not gonna ha, make everybody happy.
No, and that's the thing, that's what Tino started with it. Calendars are very complicated just because everyone, you know, each, each of you need.
Yeah, right.
Has the opinion. And you have to balance the days. So for the high schools, you have to balance the days on each side of the semester.
Yes.
So you can't have an over balance of days. There's a whole intricacy to that too.
Which like when I look at this, it's, it's like, I understand the first semester kind of hitting it hard, cause you're doing a lot of review and you need to recapture and you need to, um, maintain that, um, forward-moving momentum, right? Um, so I get that, um.
You actually need an, an extra week in the spring semester because of testing.
But that's what I was gonna say. I was like, but now I look at the spring and you've got your finals, even if we don't, even if we're not considering the all-night casp, like we, you still have like, you know, but so you really only have two months of like total. And one of those months is May, which we all know has all the things in it. So I'm like, as far as an academic standpoint, which, I'm not criticizing because you talk to academic people about this, right? Okay, I'm not. One of those, I'm just saying, that would, like, what is that feedback as far as performance goes?
In terms of what performance for what?
The academic performance and momentum for like, with your constantly taking off, starting.
It seems like you just get started, you take a break.
Right, and you know what, okay, maybe not here, but like you know the week after break and the week before break are all like.
Like March, if March here for May, I'm pretty happy. So you can start casp testing in March, but a lot of us done in April, then we have March, May, there is our AP testing. That's our AP testing. And so April, May are heavy testing, but it's generally with AP and casp.
So that's why I'm asking, like, we're doing this from a academic standpoint, cause that's why we're all here, right? Like, I'm, I'm curious about that February break. Like, what is the?
We did used to do finals when I first started teaching in this district. We had finals after winter break.
After.
So that was a pretty traditional calendar with school starting after Labor Day, having finals after the winter break, a one-week at winter break. I mean, it was very different. You went to school before Thanksgiving, you didn't take the whole week out. I mean, there was just a, a lot has changed.
So I think the February break came, must've came like, what, six years ago? Five years ago?
Recently.
It was here, my first year I was here, so it must've came before that.
It definitely happened after I graduated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it was like maybe five years in the making. So you, I mean, that is, that is something we've had talked about. You can take that out, you have the two holidays you keep in February, so you have two three-day weekends. Then you have, um, four additional days, you then could move different directions. You can move it beginning of the school year, end of the school year. So there's definitely movement you could do.
I'm just curious about the metrics used to make this decision. Was it all like, I feel, I mean, you took opinions, but those are our, I feel. Has any, like, have we ever cross-referenced the calendar with like the data from that year of academic performance?
No, I haven't.
Or even attendance.
Yeah.
Or attendance.
Attendance, we look at attendance, there's no.
It's all the same. No matter when you get a break.
It's, it's not, it's not all the same. It's, it's nominal. There's no like major spikes or dips in attendance. Yeah.
Spikes or good. Okay.
So we just need to, I mean, all the work's been done on this.
Yeah.
So I.
But nobody looked at the academics. Oh, sorry, Shelley, that was true. It's for giving.
Well, I, I, I could, I could, I could ask that, um, but I need to know specifically, are you talking about casp? Are you talking about grades? Are you talking about AP testing? Like, what specifically are you talking about?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, and so what would the, what would you want me to look at?
Well, wouldn't the casp accurately reflect all of those things?
No.
Right.
I mean, the casp looks at math and ELA and we do that testing in, um, April.
That's nice. So the thing would be is that in order for the data to be valid, you'd have to go back in time to look at our other calendars. Where we didn't have a February day. What did the data look like and what was your data source in comparison to a February we got? You know what I mean? So it's one of those things that you're gonna, yeah, and you're gonna.
And the testing is different.
And then we had, we had three-week breaks back then.
Yeah.
So we have the last ten years, I look at the calendars, we've had numerous different calendars. We've had the, um, the holiday breaks for three weeks in the winter, um, where we saw, you know, dips in attendance, up and down. Then we, and then we entered the February break. Um, but yeah, so for ten years, we could look at specific calendars and look at, um.
But you'd have to decide what your data source.
You took COVID years out, those were really.
Because testing, cause testing's different and.
I know.
You know, and, and if you're looking at academic data, there's probably some big differences between River Valley, which is on a, um, four-by-four block versus UBC High School, which is on a, you know, year-round traditional schedule. I mean.
Well, look, the, the reason I bring it up is not to be a pain, although I know I am, I totally do. But like, this is, I don't think our scores are where we want them, right?
Yes.
But that's what we're here for. I realize, and you guys know how, which I hate casp, but like, if there's another data point, I love it, but I don't. I guess my question is, I don't understand why we don't put academics in the forefront when we make these decisions. Like academically, what is going to be the best? And you can't predict the future, but you can look at the past through, you know, and go, okay. Um, because I know, like, if I was doing it on my schedule and I would like what days I'm gonna have off, that's hilarious, but anyway. And then I would do what I'm feeling, but if I looked at, okay, what did I accomplish here and went toward what the mission is, it would be a totally different calendar. I wouldn't be waiting.
Well, Kirsten, I've been here probably the longest, along with, you know, Shelley as a teacher, Merrily and Londa as, and so the, the calendar has never probably been driven in that fashion. It really has been about, what do the parents want? What do the teachers want? What do the CSEA want in terms of, uh, student attendance calendar versus a, let's look at the academic performance and is there a difference? I, we did do a study on the two-week, three-week, more about attendance than we did about grades. Um, and then, you know, what they did have me look at finals before Christmas, after Christmas, did students do better? So I mean, that, some of those were considerations, but I think right now is, and I would, I'm gonna, assuming Tino, it's done through a lot of surveying input and then looking at, you know, what the majority wants or doesn't want. And so I don't know that that lens that you're describing has been used to drive the student attendance calendar or the work calendar for, I don't know, for, for years.
Forever, ever?
Well, there were just points where we looked at certain things, but we don't, not to your extent of saying is, you know, to the February week, did that make a difference? So it was more specific to, again, finals, it was specific to attendance, those kinds of things is what the board had asked me to look at the best.
None is been attended.
Well, on the attendance thing, I mean, that, I, I will attest to that, that they did the three weeks, that we went to the three weeks when I was teaching because of the kids going primarily to Mexico.
Or out of country.
And, or out of the country to India, to Pakistan. And what happened is that they were gone for four, five, six weeks.
And the, the challenge of that, we talked about in our meeting, it's learning loss.
I mean, it wasn't just three weeks. We did that.
They don't retain the learning.
And we told them.
Yeah.
If they, you know, if, if you take longer, you're gonna be, you know, we're gonna drop, drop you.
Well, we have, but we had that discussion, like, for example, the three-week thing, one of my things was, so you're missing three, you're missing two weeks of math, which is a lot.
Yeah.
If you miss three weeks and more, you're missing, you're talking about, if you missed a one week at River Valley, you're missing two weeks of instruction in math.
Two. Wow.
So that is an academic, that is an academic, um, lens for that.
Yes.
That's why part of it, though, like, a lot of the parents would want the three weeks, but like in terms of the academic piece, you're then missing another week of direct instruction in school, especially if you're already behind in reading, you have a low grade level, you're further in that, you're exacerbating that problem.
Well, it's.
Well, and even the kids that are, even the kids that are doing well on a test, if they really haven't mastered that skill, those three weeks.
Eradicates what they've been.
They really hurt.
Well, no, I, I understand that vacation is never enough, it never comes enough, like, and nobody is like, oh man, I'm really sad that we're on break this week. Like, I really wanted to keep going. Of course not, like, no. Like, if you surveyed everybody about what they wanted, it'd be like, all vacation, never any work, never any homework, like, and maybe the parents would be like, year-round school. I don't know. But like, that's just, but that's, but, but feelings can't be our driver, right? They make great passengers, but they are terrible pilots. So our mission is.
Well, for a staff though, I think to take, I think to have that refreshing time is important. You know, for, for a staff member, for a teacher, I think it's, it is important to have that time off.
Absolutely.
Well, absolutely. I, I, I totally get it.
I mean, it's.
I don't, like I said, I don't think any staff member is like, I really don't wanna break this week. Is there any way I can just work it? I get it. But again, I would like. But again, I would like, I just would like to see us making decisions more along the lines of what is best academically um to help the 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 students thrive, um, as opposed to just like a want, yeah, um, that's what it's supposed to be.
Well, the shorter time, the shorter time is gonna be better academically for them.
Well, and I'm not just talking, I'm not talking about December, I mean, we're really looking at that second semester going, oh my gosh, there's a a week, there are six days in February, and then four days in March and two in April, and it's like, um, you know, but the minute you start walking, to get back up into that momentum, it's very difficult. Um, and so, not that it's like, I get it, I mean, like, we do all the work, there is no break, but I get it, you need that, but I'm just, I'm just wondering why we, why we aren't at least having that conversation.
Well, we actually do have a conversation though, we have a committee, and so like, I mean, for example, we talked about the three weeks, that's too long for kids to be out, so we go two weeks.
Okay.
That's an academic decision, parents want more three week, they go more days off, but kids missing three weeks in December
It's too long.
Right.
and January is a long time, and so academically, they're gonna be deficient, especially our kids who are below grade level and reading it math, and so they can't.
It's too hard to get down again. And as a teacher, I can tell you, after two weeks, I remembered all my kids' names, after three weeks, I had to relearn some.
Right, and going later in um June, you have summer schools, or that would interfere with summer school.
So. I have hundreds of them.
Ew.
Ew.
I have a question about calendar that's not about vacation days, okay, are we gonna continue with the early release Wednesdays?
We use, certainly, yeah. Yeah.
Is that part of the calendar?
That's, that's already negotiated, that's already negotiated, yeah, since CBA.
Negotiated since CBA.
Cause I'm, I do have a question about the efficacy of having, to me, and and maybe at elementary school is different, but as a high school teacher, knowing that um, some of my colleagues were way across campus and trying to get anything done in one hour every week is, and I've talked to colleagues that are teaching at high school, and it's not necessarily, they don't necessarily feel like it's getting very much, they don't get much bang for their buck, because by the time everybody gets there and um they actually remember what they were doing or what they were gonna do and all that, the time's up and they leave. Um, it was better to have a longer time, less often, like it was before we did the every Wednesday thing. So while it was great to have all those kids, um, you know, elementary and high school on the same early release schedule, um, as far as the work that you can actually get done, um collaboratively as teachers, it's not very, it's not very, it's, the efficacy is just not there, and I I just wonder if we've really studied that. Cause I I, all my evidence is anecdotal, so I'm just asking, have we really looked at whether or not this really short amount of time every single week is actually beneficial, or is it just kind of eh?
I think the um, I think the premise, I think the premise behind it is pretty research based, that you meet weekly and collaborative teams with data driven focus about student student achievement, would would be more, I think you miss out on, every other, every two weeks, two weeks, every other week, I think you're missing out on, if you're given a common formative assessments, you're trying to look at student data to like.
Well, and and, you know, in elementary school, that's probably true, but at high school, I think it's different. I don't think nine through twelve is the same as TK through eight. Well, and maybe seven, eight, six, seven, eight, middle school might be more similar to high school than elementary because they're, they're um discipline specific. You know, if I'm working right next door to my second grade teaching colleague, um, we probably collaborate a lot more than just the once a week. You know, but, you know, if I'm working in a, in a English department or a math department or a science department, and my colleagues are spread all over the campus, I I just don't see how it's really getting as much bang for the buck to do.
So Shelley, and if you remember, it's part of the negotiated CBA, and if you, I I don't know if you were still here when the discussion about that, cause we did have high school on a different schedule, and I think
Yeah.
the concern that was brought to the table was about families who've had high school students and elementary kids and, then, you know, the element, the high school kids with the, you know,
Oh, yeah, I remember that. Characterized by.
Yeah, and so, I don't know all the, can't remember all of the facts, but that's kind of how we landed here, and it is part of the negotiated CBA.
Well, and I I understand that, but I'm just saying, as we look forward to negotiating new CBAs, maybe we should look at the efficacy of that meeting time, because I don't really, most of the high school teachers I've talked to said they don't really.
Benefit from it, we did, we did benefit.
No. Like I said, I think the key, elementary would be a whole different thing.
Yeah. It was, it was very valuable.
For high school, yeah.
And also, and I can understand all of you trying to get together and, you know, all that kind of stuff, but we we were right there.
Right. Right, same, that's that's.
So, so getting, you know, having lunch and then getting back together was fast, yeah.
Right.
I just say that, I think, I think the attendance is a is a great one to look at, because I think there's been a, I always get these mixed up, so help me Shelley, correlation between just even your body, your warm body in the chair, right, consistently, and grades, right? Studies show that out, but there's a, there's a relationship, right?
You can't learn if you're not there.
I do fancy.
Right, um, had, so so when you looked at the attendance and charted the, um, you know, you you said it was minimal, I guess my question is, what was, like, when you were looking at the attendance, were you also, were you looking at the lead around vacation days? For like, you know, people who take off Thursday when it's Friday, right, and then don't come back the Monday? Like those bookend days, and those same bookend days on a year whereby there wasn't a vacation there, were those also taken off? Or is it always going to be, you know, staff and students tend to um maximize the the time by, you know, taking off a couple of days prior and after, like, was that one of the things you looked at?
Key, cause I sat for it.
I know, holy, aren't yourself lying?
So Tino, what's that, did we do any data analysis regarding the attendance of our students during, when we've got these, you know, bookend days?
Uh, we did holidays, and we did like, uh, holiday, winter break, um, spring break, yeah, we did do that.
Do what, like, but what, exactly?
Like, we we look at attendance trends of kids coming back after break and before break, and look for any like huge spikes or huge drops in it.
So, um, but, okay, yes, so like, I'm I'm better visually, so like, let's say February twenty twenty seven, right, you see this eleven and then twenty two, looking at those days, um, at the day before and the day after attendance records on days that there was a break there, and then the years where there wasn't, right? Like, there wasn't a break, how was attendance there? Is it always bad around holidays?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and get that information, bring it back to you, I don't have it specifically every holiday remembered on, yeah, back in definitely each annual.
What, what are you doing with your life, Tino, no, I'm just kidding, I mean, but you looked at that, that's all I'm really asking.
Yeah, it's overall our tru- our absenteeism has decreased over the last three years, every single year. Our chronic absenteeism continues to decrease, and kids are coming back to school more.
All right.
But yeah, there are, but there are definitely trends around holidays, it's like, come out with a question.
Yeah, I think that was the point of the the Veterans Day, the Monday, uh, when a Tuesday Veterans Day is, did we have a higher incidence of absences on that Monday?
I didn't look at that specifically.
No, and I think that's the 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 question that's being asked, is when we're looking at the calendar, do we look at those trends to discuss in the calendar committee?
Yes.
But then if it's on a Wednesday, do we have to take Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday off, and I know, and I think it's like, yeah, and that's what we talked about, is you know, it really is when you know it's like
It's not a Tuesday, probably.
a Tuesday, should we take the Monday off, if it's a Thursday, should we take off Wednesday, yeah.
Cause next year, Friday, yeah.
And there isn't just, I mean, there's a lot of um intricacies in making a calendar, um, a lot of intricacies in this.
A what? That's crazy.
And there are a lot of um strong, passionate opinions, and from parents, from students, uh, super parents, staff, admin, yes.
Veteran calendar committee, yeah, definitely, yeah.
There are a lot of habits.
Well, I would agree with that, we have to have calendars.
And from parents, from students, uh, super parents, staff, admin, yes.
But the one thing that we all get behind, regardless, students, maybe not students, okay, but, yeah, they don't want, you know,
I got everything, I'm sure.
They wanna sit on the couch and watch television, play games, you know, and maybe sometimes the parents do too, but, but the one thing we can get behind is, what we all want is academic achievement, which will translate into, you know, more empowerment and opportunities in their adulthood and greater community um impact and focus, so I think we can all get behind that, I think that's the mission, right? And so if that means I don't get a break when I really, really want it, which is every day, all day, no, um, then, okay, cause the mission. Um, so that's, that's my main focus, I would like to know that this isn't just a calendar, but that thought and focus has been laid down to it. And if it has, with confidence, then I will vote for it, I'll go, let's go, if it's mission minded.
I make a motion, we approve the calendar.
I second.
Thank you.
Let's beat the dead horse.
I, I motion by member Chulte and a second by member Bonset, all is in favor?
I want to talk more about.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here none, motion carries, thank you. Um, F, the executive assistant to superintendent and government board job description.
Vacancy.
As we're, where we have a retirement related vacancy that we need to post and recruit for as a district, um, when we have vacancies like this, that's the appropriate time to look at the job description, the scope of work, and make sure that we are posting and hiring appropriately. The job description um was last updated in two thousand and six. And so when we look at the scope of work that needs to be incorporated into the position going forward, as well as what it looks like competitively in the industry today, in our neighboring districts, in our comparable districts, we are recommending a new job description that doesn't currently exist within the district, it is the executive assistant to superintendent and government board. And then we are also recommending compensation with that on the classified management, it's obvious.
Any comments, questions?
I just really wish we had done this sooner. That's why, I just wish we had done this sooner.
I am, I personally believe that the person who's currently doing the job is doing all of this.
Right.
Every single day.
Is there a duty on?
And it is much appreciated. Go ahead.
It's twice a day, sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
What are the um duties and responsibilities on, uh, the representative duties currently on this uh um, on your, your proposed, that are uh new, that are not currently being managed, that are not currently being executed?
Most of the differences, the entire job description has been uh revised and updated, but the main areas are within project management and what that looks like um across the injured department activities that are assigned coming out of the superintendent's office, looking at the um guiding work of the staff guidance, training, supervision that would be included, policy management and interpretation, and serving in that advocacy role. Uh, it goes from a single uh clerical support where the job tasks that are completed are specific to a singular person and a singular desk of task, and moving to what is more commonly being utilized in districts at this role or a position similar to this role in the supervision and guidance of the projects that come out of the superintendent's office, as well as anything you guys may assign or request.
Um, okay.
It has more of a leading management position, um, of course, so Marysville, for example, uses utilizes this model. Um, it is the industry standard, and to be honest, ours has not been revised in a significant amount of time.
How many pages was it before you revised it?
I would have to go back and look, but I believe it's a new.
Cause this is five pages and it's a lot, and I'm assuming it was not.
It's a, it's a mystery.
It was three. It was three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, for what you do.
I know, Laura, you do all this.
Anything else? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve this.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
I'm motion by member Bonset, second by member Prey, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here none, motion carries. Um, board reports information.
Um, I attended, well, I had to zoom it, cause I was in Michigan, but I attended the the charter school, Uta Charter School meeting, uh, on a Zoom. And I just wanted to report, cause I, cause I was, cause when this charter school mentioned about their um, their reclassification of their um EL kids, uh, the Uta City Charter School is seeing that same kind of of uh result with their ELD kids. And they have a lot, they have a lot of, a lot more than than, yeah, they have a lot more, so I was very impressed.
Yes, they do. Oh, a lot. And like, Mr. Puley is coming in January to present their data.
Oh, good, 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 yeah, I don't exact, I don't have exact, the exact number, but.
It's a significant number.
Yeah, it was, he was just so pleased with the, yeah, so, we need to like visit and see what's going on, yeah.
Did they talk about, like, what our takeaways could be from that, like, what's first, what their tips and tricks are?
No, you know, I was zooming, and so I really didn't go into it, I was just zooming. Anyway, but um, yeah, it was, it was good, I was, I was pleased to hear it, he was just ecstatic, yeah.
Any, um.
Two, I got two things, uh, Rocco Gregor's not here, but if he's listening, I have to say thank you, I attended their um Halloween parade and got to see Rocco in action with all those kids and the staff, which was kicking my pants.
It's a little event.
Pretty, pretty wild, I think that's already a few weeks ago, um, that was really awesome, so if anyone else ever gets a chance to attend their Halloween parade, let the kids dress you up as a mummy and toilet paper, uh, got video, proved everything going on, that was a kick in the pants, and then two weeks, a week and a half, two weeks ago at this point in time, member Lamb and I went, attended the uh leadership conference with uh several of all all the schools.
Yes.
And uh, that was very trusting, it was fun, it was a good time, yeah, it was a really active, I guess.
It was fun, he was my dance partner.
Yeah, it was really active, I guess.
Fully participated.
We had a blast.
It made us uh had fun, uh, videoing us possibly might be on record, uh, unless against any acting like goofballs, we had a good time.
Yes. Yeah, we had a great time.
And um, and Mrs. Assini was there as well, and uh, we had a good time. So thank you for the invite, Laura, cause she called me to remind me, we should have attended, and uh, so I appreciate the the extra push to go, cause I had a good time.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Laura. We had a great time.
And this, the uh speaker is a very nice gentleman as well, and uh Keith.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we had our committee meeting with the city and like, government liaison meeting with the city and the county, I was thinking, the county.
Government liaison. Yeah, way good, uh, way resilient, yeah.
Way resilient, just going over everything going on, and it's kind of neat because they, we talked to the county and the city and the schools and we worked together about like the road work and what's coming up projects and things to look out for, and they watch out for us and we watch out for them, and it's really interesting to see all the stuff coming up. Hopefully, we'll get some more students, cause there's a ton of houses going in.
Speaking of committees, can you get a list of committees, please?
That was sent, again, would you like me to send it?
Yes.
I could, we'll send it again.
I don't, don't.
We'll send it again.
Send it to you.
I send it.
Okay, Laura, there, so there's a limit to how many board members can be on committees, right, don't they?
Correct.
And then which of the committees are open, are open to attend?
So we'll, we'll look, I'll look at that, and then we'll get it out uh this this Friday, all right?
So.
And there was only one board member at the last SOT meeting, so, when's the next one?
It's exciting. October.
Yes.
And then Tino, you were scheduled in a grad committee, and that's the.
We had one scheduled on Thursday, we got the research one.
And that's about it, so that will be one, and there will be, we will be actively, if you simply state to those of you who are on committees.
I think so.
Okay, any other committees?
Um, I have one more thing.
Oh, which one?
I just wanted to say, um, I know we all got invited to go to King Avenue and do the Thanksgiving thing. I've done it before, and so, Blondie, you haven't done it before?
No, I haven't done it, this is my first year I get to do it, so I've always been working.
Oh, my goodness. It is so, so, so much fun, the very first time I did it, nobody told me I was serving, so I should have, you know?
Ding dong.
And it was like, they said, well, do you wanna do the mashed potatoes or the green beans, I was like, oh! But it was such a fun time, so this year, I'm gonna get there at eleven, figured if they don't have enough people at noon, I'll keep going, and then if they do, I'll probably not let them take over, I'll just keep going anyway.
It is here, and it's a lot of fun, it is a fun event, it's a lot of fun.
It is a shit fun.
Right, it's a lot of fun. I will be there at eleven too.
More about.
Just contribute. Yes.
All right, uh, communications from the public or in ones?
Bless.
No, okay, comments from employee representatives?
Excuse me. Oh.
Hey, uh, it's November and I'm exhausted. How are y'all doing?
She would like that October break.
Oh, wait, wait, no, I work on the alte calendar and I got an October break, so let me tell you, the people who don't want one are wrong.
Oh, that's right.
Anyway, just kidding. Sorry, everybody. Um, um, I did have a few comments a week about the calendar. Um, it's so frustrating to sit there and not be able to like raise my hand and jump in the conversation. Um, so attendance, uh, issues with holidays has been just a huge thing since post-COVID. Um, you know, we let them all work from home and they think they can still do that and they don't realize that that's not really an option anymore. So, you know, families come in and they're like, hey, can we have our work for the next six weeks while we, you know, travel to visit our relatives? Um, so I don't think it's gonna matter if we have a two-week break or a three-week break, uh, for winter holidays. Families are just gonna go when they wanna go. And the same with, you know, the difference between like who comes on a Monday after Veterans Day and who doesn't. Parents are just gonna do what parents are gonna do after COVID. It's just kind of the way it is. Um, I love having an October break. And I can tell you that, um, our people don't want to start school in July. Not school, sorry, let me rephrase that. They don't wanna have, um, PD and pre-service days started in July. They're very anti coming back to work in July. Um, I did a quick little internet search, uh, while, while you guys were talking about calendar. Um, and overall, the data shows that calendar really does not impact student achievement at all. Uh, the, the things that matter most are attendance, having students in seats and quality instruction. Um, and the calendar is really irrelevant. The schools that have gone to partial year round or modified or balanced calendars don't show really any improvement in their academic growth. So it's really not, um, as big of an impact on student outcome as most of the other things that we, we do here at school. Uh, so just something to keep in mind. The calendar is always a hot button issue. And just like, uh, Tina was saying, when we survey our members, it's like thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three. How do you make a decision when it's literally like a third of the pie wants three different thing, of the three options that's equally split? So you're never gonna make people happy with the calendar, which is kind of.
Just being sure.
Is what it is, but, um, safety continues to be a concern at several of our school sites. And I just wanna commend all of our administrators and, uh, district office personnel for taking things seriously, following up, protecting student safety. Um, I don't know what the secret is to helping our kiddos with their mental health post-COVID, but that's a significant issue for a very, again, a very small number of students with some very, very, very deep needs. Um, who are unfortunately their lack of resources in the community are impacting them and spilling over onto other students. But, um, I just commend everyone for doing the best they could in those situations and we always learn and grow. And I've heard communications from, uh, the admin at both high school sites and from district office personnel about tweaks to make moving forward. I'm excited about the centee jif.
Centee jif.
Yes, um, I think that just the way that works, everybody having access to the same system, including substitutes and that button push and the GPS location of like, we know exactly where the person is who has the need, exactly what's happening. I think that's gonna be a great benefit. They, I've seen the trucks out at the school sites, uh, and they're very non-intrusive. So, uh, thanks to that company as well for getting in there and putting in their software and cameras and all the things they need to do to make it work without disrupting our educational flow during the day. Um, last thing I wanted to touch on real quick is, um, it was lovely to hear from the people from Tuna First Charter. Um, we have twenty-one point six percent of our students are English language learners and seventy-nine percent of our families are low socioeconomic status. So they are definitely pulling from a very specific, um, population base and their ability to achieve those outcomes, um, is not realistic in a district of our size and the populations that we serve. Um, I appreciate you asking the question about class sizes. As you can tell, they definitely have smaller class size numbers because they're smaller and so they're able to do that. Um, so just a, a, a push to keep that in mind in times of financial crisis and staffing shortages, that class size still does matter, um, especially for our youngest students. Uh, again, thank you, everyone. Hope everyone has a really great Thanksgiving, cause the next time obviously will be in December, where I'll be wishing you all a Merry Christmas. Um, yeah, so thank you all for all that you do. I love hearing about the committees that you serve on and the school sites that you're going out to. Um, I just encourage you in this, like, the next four weeks, there's so many activities happening at all of our school sites to just kind of dig in there. And if you have time, um, you know, drop by and see what's going on. I wish I had time to get out and visit, especially the little kiddos. Uh, I got to go to April Lane and read a story to, like, first and second grade. It was so exciting. Um, so just, you know, take those opportunities to get out there and see what our teachers are doing and our, um, all our school staff for this holiday season. Cause it's a busy time in classrooms, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You dropped your pencil.
You have enough Thanksgiving as well.
That's not mine. I have. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Okay, any other comments from board members? No, superintendent?
Yeah, just, um, the King Avenue luncheon, if you would like to participate, just like Heather Sheldon, over at King Avenue. Um, I think there's an eleven o'clock and a twelve o'clock.
Yep.
Eleven and twelve. And they are always happy to have you stay longer. Um, also in front of you is CSBA. If you would like to nominate one of your fellow board members to be a delegate representative, um, I can put that on the agenda at the December meeting. Uh, this requires board action and the deadline is January seventh or sufficient. So anyone interested in, you know, delegates? It's not anyone from here, so, yeah. And would you like me to place it on the agenda for you to nominate a fellow board member here?
Does anybody wanna do it?
What does that mean, Tino?
Kirsten, you wanna do?
Um, there are free meetings.
I want it.
It's, it's free meeting. So the, on the, is it in front of you?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's not.
Okay, so it, um, uh, there are delegates elected in two thousand twenty-six will serve a two-year term beginning April first and ending March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-eight. There are two required delegate assembly meetings each year in two thousand twenty-six. The dates are May sixteenth and seventeenth and December first through second. Hmm, so you represent, you represent the boards and for the region and you get to go to meetings and talk about, um, issues at board.
Where are the meetings? Are they usually at?
Uh, they.
Probably all over.
Yeah, they did not list where they are this year.
But it's right near CSBA. Don't they just meet earlier before CSBA?
I think they have a meeting during CSBA, like the delegates luncheon that they have.
Me, yeah.
But those great meetings have to be different.
Yeah. You wanna do it, Kirsten?
Absolutely not.
Wasn't Nicola our delegate for a while? I don't know.
Nicola, why?
I didn't even.
Yeah.
Nicola, who?
Not unless I could like.
So I will, um, will send this out to electronic, so you can take a look.
You can. You can special.
There's no noun after that.
I will work with, uh, President Tommy about his draft process, but, um.
I guess we could put it on the agenda, even if nobody wants to do it.
Yes. Yes.
I don't know.
At, at least if it's on the agenda, it's like, would?
Yep.
But you're not gonna do it.
I'll go to the janitor's. And then it's not gonna.
But it would start for next year, right?
It's gonna be frustrated. Yeah.
Yes. Two thousand twenty-six.
So I mean, you gotta be on the board or if you're up for election, like some of us are up next year if we're gonna do it again or do whatever. So you gotta be like, it's, you know.
Well, I don't know.
It's a commitment for the next two years, basically. Yeah.
So I will, we'll put this in, uh, Friday and we'll send it off to you all.
Think about it, take the two weeks to think about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Next board meeting is December sixteenth. AEC is from December third to the fifth, the second, you have pre-conference. Don't forget.
Yes, and we, we will be having dinner with F three on Thursday night and, um, Wednesday right now is, uh, we're making arrangements for dinner Wednesday night and lunch Wednesday and Thursday as well. So I think the conference is at noon on Friday, so we're gonna.
I've already looked at all the restaurants and they're gonna be fabulous.
Oh.
I wish you guys, you know, thank you. Yes, you could come down for dinner if you'd like.
Oh.
You could join us for dinner Thursday night.
You can.
Whatever you.
We'll send me the information.
All right.
Perfect. I don't ever go. It's just last year and this year I haven't gone.
All right.
But you know, all the thirty years before that, I was totally.
It's okay, she'll ask more questions if she goes.
Right? Yes, this should cause joy.
And I get a motion.
Some news.
On a motion by member Pretty, second by member Bonsalet, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no, no motion carries.
Wait, I might.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.